12th meeting, Davis County Council. We're recording. We'll start the meeting as we always do with the pledge. What's allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America. This is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You can see from the agenda, the first item is to approve the minutes from the June 14th meeting. I don't know if you've had a chance to read them. Take a peek.
I've read them and I would make a motion to approve.
Motion by Matt to approve. Second by?
I second.
Tom Schaefer, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next up, Wes Boggs, Nathan.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Thank you.
I just kind of held these up yesterday, but I think honestly if you guys kind of look through online on talking, it would be better. Or for everyone to see. These are pictures of the sediment basin someone talked about. Good morning, everyone. My name is Nathan Rim. I'm the superintendent at Wes Boggs Park. Appreciate you having me here today. I also appreciate all the concern that we've had for the lake lately. We just completed our lake study. We're not quite done with the sediment removal study yet, and we'll have that in hand within the next three months. So we'll kind of have all that completed and get kind of a direction for what we're going to go. But there's been a lot of interest in the lake since that study came out. Last year, the lake actually closed at July 4th, so that really impacted the park and the community. So I think that, you know, really had an influence on the amount of interest that people are showing. So for those of you who don't know, Wes Boggs is a 622 acre lake located right outside Lagodee, Indiana. It's a huge source for recreation. Wildlife habitat contributes about $10 million annually to the local economy, so we're pretty important in that way as well. There's a heavily farmed watershed that drains into Wes Boggs, so it's about 8,300 acres. And that is the land that if a raindrop falls on that land, it's going to go into Wes Boggs. And since that land is heavily farmed and often tilled in the winter, a lot of that sediment is moving into the lake. Certainly some of it's coming from fertilizers and other sources, but a lot of it's sediment pollution. And in that sediment, there's a lot of manure. And that's the primary source of phosphorus that we're getting in the lake, so. To you members, I just passed out a small graph there. It's just one page. So I took that out of the 100-page study that we have. And the one with the graph there will kind of illustrate best what's going on. You'll notice that yellow line on your graph, and that is a healthy lake. Those bars on our graph are showing what's going on in Wes Boggs, so we have about 13 times the phosphorus that should be in Wes Boggs lake. And what that causes, phosphorus is a nutrient, it causes algae to bloom. We have blue-green algae or cyanobacteria which feed on that phosphorus bloom, and that creates toxins that are toxic to humans and animals. So that's what happened last year and will continue to happen if we don't remediate this issue. There are certain things in the past that have been addressed to kind of mitigate that issue. Those pictures that I'm showing you there on those little pamphlets, those are sediment basins. You guys drive around the lake, there's two of those. They're now pretty full. The larger one that's 17 acres is completely full, as you'll see in those photos. I can actually walk across it. You could drive equipment across it. And what it's supposed to do is catch all the sediment running into it like a pond, and that'll slow that water down. The sediment will go to the bottom, and then the clean lake water will flow into Wes Boggs. Right now, what it's doing is it's just a stream that barrels through whenever the rain comes. It'll just plow right through there, create a large channel, and then it doesn't do its job. So that's something we're going to look into dredging out, and I think that will be extremely helpful as well. In addition to that, they've recommended some chemicals. So lanthanum is an element that binds up phosphorus, and that will permanently bind the phosphorus in the lake. So we've got a study done by Ecosystems Connections, and they've recommended UtraFix as a different company that does the chemical treatments. They've done this on many lakes, and there's no harmful effects on fish or anything like that, but it will bind up the phosphorus. But I don't know if you guys read the study in there. It shows it's about $10 million for that, so it's not cheap. In addition to that, I mean, I think we really need to do some mitigation tactics in the watershed. Otherwise, to me, it's like feeding a smoker that's still smoking three packs a day. I mean, if we're still pushing in all that phosphorus, why spend the money to treat the lake if it's just going to continue coming in? So we've addressed that as well. I formed a water committee, so that's 10 volunteers from around the local community. We try to get some influence from different backgrounds. We've got educators from Purdue Extension, myself. We have a couple park board members. We have people that were experts in wastewater treatment. And in addition to that, we got some farming backgrounds and then some Amish members as well, who have been extremely helpful. That group in particular wrote about 200 letters to fellow people in their community and farmers, and there's some real changes going on in the way people are farming. Most notably, I would say, grassing ditches and waterways is super important. A lot of people are spreading manure into the ditches and waterways, and I've even seen people pumping hog manure into the ditches that runs straight into bog. So, you know, we're trying to mitigate those sorts of things. But I think education will be a huge component of that, so we're trying to work with that. I applied for a 319 grant, so that will give us $50,000 annually for education, should we get that, so that'll last three years. We'll try to use those for, you know, pamphlets like I just passed out. I've taken ads out in the Amish newspaper called The Courier to educate people. We'll have little workshops, maybe cookouts, things like that, have speakers from Soil and Water come and utilize that money that way. I've also looked for other sources of funding for the dredging. I can only find so far, Lair has $100,000 for each basin. That's not going to go that far. It's about $25 a cubic yard to dredge that. I'll know that number soon as far as how deep those are as our study gets completed. But it's also millions for each one, so that's not going to go real far either. So that's kind of where we're at now with what we're wanting to do. So as it stands, we're kind of looking at federal funds. I just mentioned that to you to run over here, or I'm sorry, Mike. We're looking at sending a letter kind of with your blessing, which I can send to you guys. But we're looking at getting some seed money either for an attorney to form a conservancy district. So what that is, is a kind of a small tax which would be on that watershed, that 8,300 acres, and that would be our sustained funding. There's 137 of those in just Indiana alone, so this isn't something that's abnormal. For instance, Lake Lemon has one. I sent some pictures of the Lake Lemon project. They're doing some dredging over there. And they get about $800,000 annually from their conservancy district. So they have a tax on their people that live around the lake in their watershed or that utilize that lake, and that perpetually pays to dredge that out. So that would be kind of our long-term plan. But in addition to that, we're looking at some funding initially from Congress. I think that we'll have our sediment removal study, like I said, within three months, and that'll kind of give us the last piece of the information that we need to know what we need to do. But I think it's kind of that three-step approach. We need to educate the folks in the watershed, get some management and best management practices for the farmers and landowners, dredge those basins out, and then do a chemical treatment. As of this year, if you guys have been to the lake, it's actually really nice. Don't let it fool you. The symptoms are low this year, but the lake is pretty sick. Mother Nature's been pretty good to us this year. We just haven't had the rains that we've had in the past. Like last year, I wasn't here, I was at a state, but as I understand it, there was a lot of rain coming in at the beginning of the year. And what that's doing is washing all those nutrients in and allowing those algae cells to bloom. So right now, it's been really good. I think after those rains around the 4th of July, it's going to get a little worse. But on June 29th, we had our last test done, and the cell counts were around 13,000 per 100 milliliter and 100,000 per 100 milliliters, that threshold that we need to change our swimming flag. So we have flags at the beach that show that level of algae. So right now, it's sitting really good, but I expect it to bloom probably within a month or two. I'm already starting to see it happening a little bit. So you guys have any questions or anything as far as, yeah?
I was looking at your year-to-year comparison on there, but is that basically due to rainfall? Or why is there difference in, it looks like our trend is actually pretty good, and then it kind of picks back up?
Forgive me, which one are you looking at?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, so those are two different, for each graph bar there, those are two different dates. So if you look on the bottom there, it'll correspond to two different days. A lot of that's just kind of the rainfall and time that it's sampled. But no matter what, that yellow baseline's where we should be.
Oh, I understand that. So there's no real?
There's no real.
Hey, it's not reduced or whatever?
No, it's not. I've taken E. coli samples that are 2,800 per 100 milliliter and 88's safe to swim in tributaries that are coming in, so I give some perspective on that. So it's a real issue that, you know, is really coming out of the park. It's, you know, a lot of private land that's filtering in there that, you know, will need some help, I think, to kind of influence and get some best management practices to turn this lake into what it should be.
So basically, the short term, we're trying to stop the bleeding now.
Correct.
Try to?
Yeah, short term, I would say, the first thing I would like to do is probably get that basin dredged out. I think that would be the most ideal thing. The smaller basin off 1200 highway has still got a little bit of water in it. It's about two feet deep, so it's sort of doing its job. The large 17-acre one is completely full. So I think once we get that sediment removal study, figure out exactly where that sediment would go, what's in it, how much that would cost. There's a couple options there. There's mechanical dredging, which is essentially backhoes. A lot of times, they put them on barges and dig it out as they go. And then there's hydraulic dredging, which is almost a big vacuum attached to a boat, and it's going to suck up the sediment along the bottom and do it like a mower. And that's, they're doing almost $10 a cubic yard out at Lake Lemon, which is about a third of what the DNR quoted me. So if we can do that on the smaller basin, that'll be substantially cheaper.
Where does it go?
Yeah, I was going to ask that.
Where does it go? There's farmers that would take it. That stuff's pure fertilizer, so phosphorus is great for plants, good for the algae, but the plants love it too, so we could essentially pipe it into farms that want it. Mark Wickman lives nearby. He suggested that he would take it. So that's an option. So we'll look into different options and make sure that it's not going to run back down.
Yeah.
That's another concern, so we would.
Far enough away.
A few things we can do, we could till it in, so that's an option. There's also huge bags. I don't have a farming background, so I'm not sure what they're called, but I've seen them out in fields, great big long bags, you pipe it in there, and then it would seign it out. So the water would then come out of those bags, and the sediment would stay, and that would allow it to dry, and you could till it in then. Other people just bury it, so that's another option.
Is there something you could monetize so that, you know, when you take that sediment out and for a small fee, that way you're making some money back for your project?
We can certainly try to do that for fertilizer. With Lake Lemon, no one's really coming to pay to get it, but it depends. I mean, if we can advertise that and people want it, then absolutely, we will. Correct. That was calculated by our study. They suggested to us. So we bring in about 200,000 people annually, and those people go out to eat. They bring in, you know, they buy gas. They contribute to the local economy and businesses around here. It's kind of tough to know right now. They are pretty hard on the numbers for the, the lanthanum is around 10 million. I don't want to speculate on the basins just yet until I get some more information. I don't know exactly how deep the sediment is in there, is the issue. So I know how big the area is, but I got to calculate how deep they are to know. We would do it in pieces? Honestly, I'm not sure. We'd have to kind of see what kind of an appetite there is for that. And I haven't been able to calculate exactly how many people are in the watershed yet. I've got the map of that outline, but I haven't been able to export that onto an Excel sheet with each landowner. We wrote letters to a lot of them, but there's some that are missing inside that watershed map, so that's another step that I need. Get that kind of exported onto a sheet, and then we'll know exactly how many people, and then we can figure out what would work. Usually, that's based on not land area, it's based on property value, how that works. So we need to get 50% of the landowners' names to say yes, or 50% of the property value to say yes, in order to get that passed. So typically, what we would do is send out tons of information, like those flyers, newspaper ads, radio ads, all that kind of stuff. Make people understand why this is important. And then after that, we would then send a survey out to those folks who live in the watershed and kind of see what they're going to vote. If it's way above 50%, we don't need to do any more education. We can go ahead and send the vote out, and we should be good. If it's below 50%, we'll have to kind of, you know, reevaluate our game plan there. And then once that passes, it typically takes about a year to a year and a half to form the conservancy district. Been told that's over $100,000 in legal fees. It's a very specialized process. They said it's pretty arduous. Once we get that passed, then we would then decide how much the project costs and work backwards for how much the tax should be. That tax would go to specific projects, so typically, you would take one at a time and say, hey, we're going to dredge the basins. It's basin A is $3 million. We need to raise X amount over the course of three years or so, and then get it done that way. As far as the chemical treatments go, if we could get a larger appropriation, that will help the lake immediately. So within like three days after dumping that stuff in, the phosphorus is going to come out, and we should have a clean, healthy lake. But again, I don't want to, and I don't think anyone would want to spend that money and not do mitigation tactics within the watershed and also do the basins. The basins have caught millions of pounds of sediment, so.
When you talk about the conservatory tax that exists in the other ones, how much is that per hundred, or what kind of dollar amount is that?
It varies depending on the project. So I talked to Lake Lemon, and they can assess the tax rate based on the benefit. So it's not like a set rate. It's based on the project involved.
As you go through that process and setting this up, you know, especially you asked, like, if we have a letter that we're going to help you with. I mean, can you keep us up to date on what's going on?
Absolutely.
Through your whole process, because, you know, having that partnership, I think it's going to be good moving forward.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, I didn't want to do that without your blessing either. We haven't said anything.
Yeah, as much detail as you can provide, it'd be, you know, let us look at it, so.
Yeah. So as of now, we have about a 100-page water study. I think you guys all have that, and then we have a sediment study. Make sure you get both of those, and then we'll have a sediment removal study, and that'll kind of encapsulate what we need to do, I believe. We also have Banning Engineering looking at the sediment removal. The current contractor that we have, speaking out of turn, is not an expert in the sediment removal. So we looked at Banning Engineering to kind of make sure that that gets done correctly. Make sure that we have kind of a backup plan, and those numbers are going to be correct as far as where we're going to put that and how much it will cost. Because numbers that I've heard vary greatly, I mean, from $10 to $30, so massive variances in cost.
One thing you might talk to, and I do have a farming background, you might talk to the farmers around there, those who are interested in doing some sort of mitigation, like a buffer zone or grass waterway. Talk to USDA, and they might be able to get some funding for that on their end. It would help that mitigation process around the watershed.
I'll talk to the USDA. We've talked to NRCS and Soil and Water about it as well, but that's, that's a fair assumption. Thank you. Any other questions, guys? I'd be happy to get you all that information that you would need. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You want these back? All the ways, grant application, education, Megan.
As much information as we can do.
So is this, just like some? I was going to make a Biden joke. Ron Burgundy, you just read what's on the prompt there. I'm just reading.
So my name is Megan Frederick. I am the coordinator for the Soil and Water District here in Washington. This is Amber Stevens. This is our current education coordinator. We are wanting to get a grant to get Amber on full-time. Our goal is to, you know, eventually, hopefully, the county could get her on full-time. But I know it's expensive to do that, so we're hoping to apply for a grant. You know, if everything works out, and then that grant would go for three years, and then at the end of that three years, we'll give you even better spiel to show you what we've done. Because education for conservation is very important in this county and all counties. So I think you guys should all have a copy of the grant application request. And then I had ran some numbers, so the first sheet you see with all the colors is, you know, the grant can only cover salary. That is it. They cannot cover benefits, holidays, or paid time off. So that's where the benefits package comes into. You got the benefits, holidays, paid time off, and then taking out the current, what you would currently pay for part-time, no matter what. And then what the SWCD could cover for 2024. And if you look at the second page of numbers, so I've got for year one, essentially, I'm asking the county for zero extra dollars for this grant for the first year. The second and third year, those are rough estimate numbers, because I don't know as far as pay raises, insurance changes. I don't know how that'll go about for those two years, because I just, I don't know that right now. I'm sure you don't know that either. So that's, but we do, as a district, we have committed, you know, that first year to, for you guys to have zero extra. And then for the next two years after that, have whatever the difference of what we could commit. I know it's a lot of information throwing at you. Do you have any questions about any of it?
So right now, you've, you've applied for the grant?
We haven't applied for it. This is, we are getting permission to apply for the grant. We've talked to the commissioners, and they've approved that we can apply, but now we've got to apply to see if you're willing to.
Support it, yeah.
Support it.
Who do you apply to, and then how soon do you get an answer?
So we, as a district, and it's four soil and water districts in the state of Indiana, we have a Clean Water Indy, Clean Water Indiana funds that they do competitive grants for districts. So we can apply for these grants through the district. And the deadline for that is September 6th for the application for the grant. And then we wouldn't know if we receive it until, I think they said October 22nd through the 24th, somewhere in there, end of, or sorry, end of October, October. So they would meet, and, because it's a competitive grant for all of them throughout the state.
There's really nothing to do. Couple things. You just want our blessing to go ahead on that.
I mean, if you're saying you're willing to, because in year 2025 and 2026, we would be asking for some funds for the difference. Because the match for the dollars would have to be the benefits package. And obviously, like I said, I can't cover holidays, paid time off and all that. So, you know, we're looking in year two, which would be 2025, roughly looking at an additional 67, 6,756.95. Because her current salary and taxes and all that is the 20,000, but again, these are all rough numbers. We're asking for an additional for those years, if you would be willing.
So at this point, you're just looking for permission to apply, and then knowing our support, but I think that's the first step, right? So I mean, I think we support it. We got to see if you get it.
Yeah.
And we got to determine at that point, so I have no problem giving my permission to try it.
Yeah.
Because I mean, it's a moot point if.
Right, yeah. And, because, like I said, you know, these are rough numbers, so it's like I can't give an exact of.
And we're going to ask those numbers later.
Yeah, and I've got a pretty good idea, but it's, you don't ever know, so.
How is Soil and Water funded presently? How do you get your money?
So we are, our salaries are paid by the county. We're county employees. And we have our own district funds, but we use those, so we have a lot of, we'll help with cover crop programs and things like that.
Like how much are we talking about in that fund?
200,000, roughly in that fund. We get it through, like I administer CREP, so that's payments for, blank. Different practices. And then for administering that, like, you know, we get 10%, the district does. And it's little things here and there for that that just add up. And then, you know, we do charge a ticket fee for annual meeting, but that's not really a moneymaker kind of thing. And we have a drill and post driver that we rent out to local farmers for, because we have a lot of CRP in the county so they can drill that and things like that. That's just a quick example.
That's fine. How many employees are in?
It's just myself, Amber, and we have one other, Ryan Harner.
Do you have, I'm sorry to keep asking questions.
No, you're good.
Is there any metrics that, you know, that you're going to see by the education? Is there any results that you're going to see by her being full-time? I mean?
That's what we'd like to show, because, you know, we have our goals of what we would like to see. And because that would be data that we would hope to collect for the next two and a half years. If we get this grant to show, okay, this is what we do with part-time. Here's what we've done with full-time. And here's the difference of what we've done. It will be hard, I will say, you know, because, well, we've talked to this many people in education, but it's to, because there's a lot more things in our office that we do that will be a big help to have another full-time employee, so.
Going back to what Nathan talked about a minute ago, about, you know, dredging the lake over there and so forth, that's one factor.
But then mitigation and educating people is another part in the long-term solution to that.
That's part of what. And we've sat down with Nathan as well, because, yeah, a big factor in all of that is education, because it's, if you don't know, you don't know. So, I mean, if you don't know that you're putting that stuff into the lake, you don't know. And practices through the district and the NRCS and stuff can help that, so.
And it's not just in the county. It's not just over at Boggs.
No.
Farms all over this county, and there are, you know, streams and so forth, the lakes all over this county that where that stuff filters in here every day, so.
That definitely sounds worthwhile. So do we need a motion for, for permission? If so, I move that you have our support for that?
I second.
So Tony, I made a motion for support.
I got a second.
And then Mike second.
Motion by Matt to support. Also, what we're saying is not only allowing, applying for the grant, but also for the $18,000 if they get the grant. Okay. Motion by Matt?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Second by Mike. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, the mail rolls west gate, CF1 from before.
That's the one that's the same thing again. What do we do about that?
All right, did we use the information?
Grant will tell us. You obviously know what you're looking at. You get these in May of each year. It looks like we got this in May. And I do think we want to work on our process just a little bit, so there's a summary of all, and that we know that we've got them all in. I emailed one last week, I believe, when they came in late. This one actually looks like it came in one time before May the 15th.
Grant, I think it was on time. I just don't think there was any, there's no information.
Yeah.
Right.
And when they, when they applied for the grant, you know, they want to say it was just for real property, but when they applied for the grant, they said they were going to have 30 to 40 jobs. And they have not given us any information.
They clearly put this together quickly.
Well, we actually, again, requested, or Carmen requested additional information, and they haven't submitted anything else.
So at a minimum, we need to follow up with those that are late, and it's your call if you want to. Statue in place if aren't complying with the process happens next.
What's the latest date we can say yes to this?
I don't know if there is a date. It would be Q2. So even if someone didn't turn this in, they really have to do anything, but they do have an obligation by a certain time. And it's supposed to be, so turn this in, but it doesn't.
So do we give 30 more days?
I think we send them a registered letter.
No. I'll physically reach out.
Okay.
And then I will email everybody what's going on. Remind me, dear. We'll have, we'll have answers by the next meeting.
Awesome.
Providing all these phone numbers are correct. All right, David. Next level firefighting training?
Everyone received this, a copy of this flyer put out by the Homeland Security. Okay, so, and did everyone see the article in the newspaper yesterday?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm here to just kind of talk about that a little bit. Right now, presently, firefighters have to travel some to do testing for their classes. They take about 100 hours of training. Uh, they take about a hundred hours of training, um, and sometimes they have to travel as far as Mount Vernon, Indiana. So Homeland Security, uh, got funding for, uh, regional training sites. We looked at it and we thought that, uh, we all, we have a training site out at Washington Township on 150 South. Uh, it's been there about fifteen years. It's starting to deteriorate. And those containers that we used back then have wooden floors. So part of your training, you have to do live burns in multiple-story structures. So, uh, we thought this would be a good time for us to maybe apply for this, uh, our site. And then, um, see where we land and, and take that structure down. And, and hopefully the state would spend half million dollars and build us a new one. So Davies County falls right in a perfect spot because we touched five counties. And centrally located firefighters would only have to travel, you know, twenty, thirty miles. So that's what we're, uh, and the only reason I come here is ask for your support. Maybe a letter sent to, uh, Homeland Security Fire, State Fire Marshal's Office. And they said that, that helps a lot when they determine. So, um, you know, I just like, uh, like for that endorsement, um, reached out to the commissioners yesterday. And, and I know, uh, you know, some politicians, Eric Basler and a few of those guys are on board with it, you know. Now there is some neighboring, you know, counties applying for the same thing. So hey, and if they get it and we don't, at least we're cutting down that travel time. Because, you know, when you're talking about volunteer firefighters and you're asking them to take a hundred hours of training, you know, and then, then travel on top of that, uh, taking a Saturday out of their time. And, uh, you know, if we can make it easier, maybe we can get more people involved. So. Any questions on that?
I mean, we have the letter to sign. We just need everyone's support. I, I think that falls, if there is something in the no-brainer category, that, yes, that would be this. So. Yeah, or total support, anything we can do?
Well, and, and you know, when, when, uh, thi- this could affect a thousand firefighters in the, in the five-county area, you know. You get those people coming in, spending, you know, they'll spend the day there. They're, they're, they're gonna buy food, uh, you know. And, and so, you know, it could bring some county, some money into the county. And, uh, it, it just seemed like a no-brainer for us to apply for this, so.
I think it's a win-win.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you talk too, it's gonna save firefighters around here money going somewhere else.
Right.
If it's located elsewhere.
And part of the purpose too is if, with regional training, the, the training is consistent. The state will dictate exactly what takes place, you know, and, and so, you know, that helps out too. So. It's, it's, it's gonna be very little cost for us. My township trustee, Michelle, uh, Guy, she'll have to insure it, which, you know, she's insuring a building there now. City has agreed to run some water back there, a couple hydrants, you know, cause, uh, we need that back there for training. And, and so we're, you know, everyone's on board, so.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Sign a letter at the end of the meeting and get it to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Now I ordinate Kelly.
Good morning.
Morning.
Not asking for much today. Um, I have a grant that I need appropriated for its intended use. Uh, we have a partnership for community outreach with joining Knox County Health Department. Have a community health worker that works at community events to hopefully linkage to care is the appropriate term. So that's a twenty thousand dollar grant. We've already started receiving it monthly. Need to pay the worker. Happy to answer any questions.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. There's one off the agenda here in a minute. Thank you. We have our DCH appointments, nominations for the hospital board, um, Tyson and myself.
Hmm, I don't know.
Pretty, pretty shaky characters, a banker and accountant. So that's, that could be bad news. We, we both served there and have for years, so.
I move to approve.
Second.
First by Tom, second one's by who? Mike, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed. I don't vote anybody, so don't have to abstain. Official appropriations, county general. Commercial contracts. Jamie, you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today, um, representing auditor Jen and myself as treasurer, uh, to discuss and ask for appropriation for our new software tax, for the tax, which would service the treasurer's office and the auditor, so both. I think we've spoken and about the ongoing problems and. Met with commissioners yesterday and was okay that we're asking this year for the cost one eighteen eight oh two. Then, um, it's gonna be the same next two years that we've already budgeted for the current software. We've done some research and some troubleshooting and we've had some issues. And some elected officials have come to me, brought up issues with addresses. We had the same thing happen yesterday. We've already getting the rolls for next year and the addresses are still. It'll be more, I think, uh, compatible for the office. Cause we already have low with our financial side and it will just integrate. And there's better reports, better training. I'll feel better. No more, nothing software to serve taxpayers. Elaine was the first official that had the EXOFT and there was problems. It's been an ongoing thing for today to ask and.
Okay, a couple of things. Grant's going through the contract.
Grant's already looked at the EXOFT.
Wow, yeah.
Wow.
And the, to get out of, I'm sorry.
And to get out of the other one. And then Dale, who was here earlier. We spoke with him, yeah. He's on board with this.
Yes.
From the IT standpoint. There's no manual loading from one, one software to the other, everything. Questions for, and maintenance is the same the next two years. So what we're looking at is one hundred and eighteen eight today and then in two, the third year, fourth year. Yep, we would pay the remaining balance. Questions, comments for Jamie?
Just speaking as a taxpayer who gets a lot of tax bills every year with our farm ground. Ever since we went to the EXOFT program, I've had issues every year. Something has always been wrong or wrong address. They leave, we have some ground where we have multiple owners on the same one. They'll leave the other owners off. And so I gotta go back to old tax bills and figure out which one this one goes to. This is a taxpayer, I'd be in favor of it because I've had issues every single year we've been with EXOFT.
Mr. Meredith had people approach him about the ditches.
I have, yeah.
They were on there one year.
They're not.
They're not.
Oh, I've gotten conversations. Uh, I look at it two ways. One, the issues we've had with that. Two is from a technical background that I have. I, I really wanted to spend some time with Dale because he has to support this. And I mean, that's a big deal. One, for the office holders. Two, to support it. And it's a win for him and that's a big deal.
Yes.
Makes everything flow so much better. So that kinda, if you don't have support, what do you have, right? And, um, so if he's, if he's happy with it, you know, definitely he has my support, so.
What kind of transition time will that be?
Um, we had to go ahead and get on the, their books, I guess, to get the new software. And we will have to complete the end of the year with EXOFT because, you know.
It's so close, yes.
So I hope they services as well, or just as good we've had, that, you know. I hope there's no issues there, but we're looking forward to it. Jen and I are excited and looking forward to get it done. And so the data pit stop is another vendor that will start taking, uh, data information. And we'll have, uh, I think Jen said a sandbox to work in on applications at the same time to see how it'll feed into it.
Well, that was another thing too, is there's a, you know, side-by-side comparison as you're going through the process. And we do that all the time, cause you wanna see what you're getting.
Yes.
I think you're gonna see the benefit there as well, so, yeah.
I, I do think it's important to note that EXOFT is, is probably the number one software in, when you look at the assessing.
Yes.
Part of the county.
Yes.
And I, I think it, I think we, I don't know, I wasn't on it then, but I think we knew it was a kind of a pilot or experimental deal when they went into the thing. Hop- but hoping that we could get some continuity there with the EXOFT side. Since that didn't happen, I guess it's time to move on. That's what you're saying, right?
Please, yes.
Did that, did that sound like a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and, uh, change the software.
Well, motion by Tom to approve the one hundred and eighteen eight oh two.
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
That was Mike.
Mike.
Oh, Mike, sorry, Mike. All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, appropriation from Judge Sibeki, transitions, transcripts, depositions. Basically need an additional four thousand dollars.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Marilyn. I'll second that. Second by Matt, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next item, we already did with Kelly. Next up's aviation.
Good morning. I'm Erica Burkemper. I'm your relatively new, um, airport manager. Uh, this is my inaugural appropriation, so please bear with me and let me know if I need to provide any more, um, documents. But literally, um, last budget was, there was not enough fuel appropri- or, um, put in the budget for it. I have roughly seventy-five hundred, um, left and I have twenty-eight thousand worth of bills right now. That keeps my tanks, they're both, um, about equally halfway full. Um, so it's a comfortable level, especially with us getting ready to go into a shutdown. But it is Oshkosh week, so traffic, I, I don't, I don't know how this is gonna play out. I've heard Oshkosh week, it's a, um, we get a lot more traffic, but with the NOTAM issued of our shutdown or reduced runway. It's anybody's guess. So, um, kinda going on a wing and a prayer there. But when we do get fully back open, I expect to be super busy. Um, I could even be, uh, switching some funds around just to cover fuel costs for the remainder of the year. But I think forty thousand from you guys should be plenty. Um, I'm gonna knock on wood on that, cause really, I do not know.
Well, we make money on the fuel, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. We do make money.
And that money goes back in general?
Um, I, uh, currently, um, I've turned in receipts or turned in, um, receipt of income, I believe it's called. A hundred and seventy-four thousand to date. So, and we had a fuel budget of a hundred and fifteen thousand.
The price has gone up.
It has. It has. Um, our fuel prices, I try to keep them just slightly below average for this area. And that's within a fifty mile radius. We have a lot of airports within a fifty mile radius. Some are full service, some are self-service. So the prices fluctuate from, I wanna say like six bucks all the way down to five, well, seven dollars all the way down to five dollars. So depending on, and we're, we're right there at the happy medium. Plus everybody that comes in, they're just thrilled with how well laid out the airport is, how, um, pilot-friendly it is. And so word gets out and more people stop by.
I was, I, I noticed some air tractors this week, um, you know, for the crops.
Yes.
With the closure, cause you know, that was a big fuel fire.
Right.
Coming in. What are we thinking there?
So you're talking like, um, well, they're still coming in, cause we'll be reduced runway. And I don't think the closure will happen until August.
Okay, so they should.
So they should be out by then.
They'll be done.
They'll be done.
And then the reduced runway will be reduced runway for Oshkosh too. I brainstorming, um, and I, I might propose it as an inconvenience fee to my board. But I'd like to knock a couple cents off the fuel prices even more to entice pilots to land. Even though we do only have a reduced runway or a grass runway, runway, sorry. I, I don't want that NOTAM, I don't want them to see that NOTAM and automatically scratch us off.
Right.
I want our fuel prices to, um, say, oh, well, maybe it's worth it. You know, maybe it's not that bad. So.
Well, I know in the past too, you get a lot of experimentals and tail draggers and stuff. They're gonna use that grass runway.
Yeah.
They won't have a problem landing on that reduced.
Yeah, and if.
That's a great idea.
If the fuel price is just a little bit lower for the time that we're shut down, I, I think it might still generate enough interest that people don't overlook us if they're passing through. That's, I'm gonna propose that to my board tomorrow, um, at our board meeting. But, uh, yeah, the, the forty thousand, with your blessing. I hate my first meeting with you guys is, is coming to ask for money, but here I am. Um, I did raise our budget when you, when you guys review, um, uh, budgets for the different agencies. I did raise it and I raised my supplies. Everything else I kept the same, cause I'm new to this. So I'd like to see how the rest of the year goes and then start in next year. And maybe next year's budget will be adjusted a little bit more. But I, the one, two things I did raise were the fuel and the office supplies. So. If I have your attention for just a few more minutes, um, couple of things coming up I wanted to make you guys aware of. And in the future, uh, we might look at purchasing a fuel truck for Jet A. Either purchase or lease. I'm not sure how the county feels about leasing. But I, I think Matt can attest, our Jet A pump is worn out. I've had, um, Hoosier equipment, whose services are fueling system. There's nothing they can do to increase its production. It's just, it's lived a good life. So a fuel truck, Huntingburg has it, um, I think Bedford has it. It, it's just, we can go to the jets and fuel them. They don't, they don't have to go to the pump. Belt Tech, another company out at the airport, just purchased a jet that has a seven hundred gallon tank. They're gonna be sitting at my pump for about an hour to fill that thing up right now. So. I know we just asked you guys for money for one runway, but, um, fuel truck is gonna be in the very near future.
And with the increased traffic that'll come.
Exactly, exactly. I'm not asking for anything brand new and even if it's a two thousand gallon deal. But from what I have seen, a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand. But don't quote me on those. It's, that's just a good average per, average price.
And the game changer in Huntingburg when they got theirs. And especially, I mean, you got planes, you know, those, those jets just can't start up and move.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have all these jets sitting out there. How are you gonna move them to fuel them when they can't get close to the pump? You need something to go to them.
To go to them, yeah. Um, so that, that would be, uh, that would be something. Hangars. I have a waitlist for hangars. Um, I had my, uh, um, Nick, I'll butcher his name. He's been before you guys before, but he's, uh, he's with Wolfert Engineering. He has drawn up plans, um, for the expansion of airport hangars. Um, so if businesses do come, I have a layout to propose to them if they wanna build their own hangar. Um, we have the ground for it. We can easily get ready for them. Um, so that's a, that's a factor. And then as well as building more T-hangers for smaller, um, smaller businesses or private individuals. Uh, I currently have a waitlist. I can't keep, I can't get hangars open fast enough. So if you, if you guys would even build me twenty more T-hangers, I'd fill them tomorrow. So, uh, another thing with the fuel truck and the growth that the airport's seeing. Uh, a full-time maintenance person slash fueler might be in the future, somebody to help me full-time. I, I do have part-time guys. I have summer help and I have a part-time guy, Terry. They are both wonderful. I would not get rid of them to save, for, to save nothing. But, yeah, I, there will come a time I need a, a fuel, a full-time, an extra full-time help.
Well, things are growing.
Rapidly.
And those guys have done a great job.
Yeah. I, actually, my summer help, Owen, um, he's a, he's a pilot. He's got his license and everything. A young kid, um, I wanna say nineteen, twenty maybe. and everything. A young kid, I wanna say nineteen, twenty maybe, eighteen, nineteen, he would be excellent for that full-time position. I mean, he, he already knows it, but he's my summer help, so in August I'll lose him. So that, that'll be something I come to you guys next year, once I, I feel a little bit more comfortable with getting a full-time, a full-time maintenance slash fueler position. I have a grant. I'm not quite sure what it was used on. The numbers that the, the auditor, Jen has, the auditor's office has, I can't find anything to match it, but it's about thirteen thousand left in the fund. I need to ask, I guess, your blessing or, or your guys' blessing and the commissioner's blessing, if we can use that for courtesy car purchase. Right now, we have a very old Brown Impala. That's just seen its last leg. I need to, we need to invest in a van, honestly, something that holds four to six people comfortably.
Aren't we returning something from the sheriff's department?
Well, that's, we, we would.
We've actually talked. I talked with Gary because they were doing some of those. We got some numbers, but you guys were trading those pretty quick.
Once we got now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we, we were looking at those.
Okay.
One time, yeah. And it was like, we gotta go, we gotta.
Yeah. And that's, this money's just sitting there. I, I went back through our records. It has not been touched. I can't even find since two twenty, twenty-one.
We wanna be very careful.
Yeah. I, I've checked with Nick. He said all his records with her are clear, so it's, it's just sitting there. I hate that. It's just, I, I feel we could put it to use.
If, we gotta be careful with grants.
Yeah.
If there's no encumbrance or we're not for a specific purpose, well, okay, but we do need to do some diligence on the research.
Okay.
I don't wanna.
Okay.
Stop that with the FAA.
I just need to find a way to find out what that grant amount, what the numbers for the auditor and then grant that, grants that we've had, and I can't, nobody, nobody can find those missing numbers.
Got you.
So I don't know how we could go about that, but I'm open to suggestions. But yeah, Nick's, Nick's checked his records and we are all caught up on payments with them.
Oh, I'll speak with you offline.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Auditor's office is gonna dig into that and try to get you an answer.
Okay. Okay, there should be, I was gonna say, when you guys issue payment, I don't know if they attached grant numbers to them or the claims or anything.
And it should went to the commissioners for approval too, so if we have those numbers, it should be in the minutes.
Yes, yeah. That's, and like I said, this is my first time.
No, absolutely.
Coming, so I'm bringing it. I know I need to go before the commissioners too.
Good collaboration.
Yes. Last but not least, and again, I'll go to the commissioners for this, but the Eclipse, everybody's aware that it's coming, April eighth, I'm gonna ask both the commissioners and the council's blessing to close the airport to the public that day with the projected air traffic I'm supposed to have and being such small scale with minimal staff, I don't think I can handle both. And I'd like to close the airport to the public. Somehow figure out, just keep air tra, air, aircraft owners slash guest only. In other words, I, I guess I need to post somebody at my driveway and if they're just gawkers or Eclipse fans, please move on. This, this property's closed to the public for this day. That's the best thing I can think of, but I'm open to suggestions because this will be my first one.
Well, a couple of things here. First of all, that's under the executive branch, so that.
Okay.
That's the commissioner.
That's the commissioners too, okay.
As far as the other things, we're gonna do two things here. We're, we're, we're gonna vote on the fuel.
Sure.
And then as far as fuel trucks, maintenance people and all that stuff.
Sure.
Budget time is coming. That's when we sit down and figure out what we're gonna do, what the expenses are, what your budget is and so forth.
Okay.
So for today, that's with them. We approve the forty thousand dollars and then, and go on.
Thank you.
So moved by Mike Sprinkle, second.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Yeah. Appreciate the information.
Heads up. Like I said, I, do you guys want me to come to your meetings monthly to give updates or, I'm not quite sure what was done in the past, so I am completely open to suggestions.
I think we'll make a request as we go through the construction process if we have any questions, then we'll invite you, because I know you're busy too, so.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. Whenever we did Kelly's community health, that included the PRR from the social security as well. Take care of that. Take care, Rares. And motor safety?
Morning. This is the motor safety grant the sheriff's office has received for several years now. Total of the grant received was seventy-five hundred dollars. It allows us to, to patrol West Boggs Lake, the presence, a law enforcement presence in the park in general. Anybody has any specific questions about how we do the program?
I mean, did we overspend on it, Steve, or?
No, so usually there's a, some, for every year that I've been doing it, there's been some money that's carried over from the previous year. So the total grant was received was seventy-five hundred. There's approximately eight hundred left over.
Just need us to appropriate it so you can go ahead and continue doing work.
Correct.
Yep. So moved.
Second. So moved by Mike Sprinkle. Second by Matt Mayer, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Stay right there, Steve.
Thank you.
Repairs and maintenance.
Okay, this.
Deal repairs.
Yes, this is two issues here. The first, the total's a fifty-five thousand dollar request. Fifteen thousand of that's gonna be for repairs for the elevator in the front lobby. So when they built the building twenty years ago, in the, in the bottom of that elevator shaft, there's a pit. Within that, there's an even smaller, deeper pit. Anytime we get a good rain, they fill up with water. There's no pump, there's no drain in there, so that water just sits there until it evaporates. So it's caused some rush and some issues on some things, the mechanics of the elevator. So the fifteen thousand is gonna be for that, to fix the elevator. There's some rusted pipes in there. I think they're gonna repair some cylinders, some fittings and whatnot. And then the other portion of that would just be to get us through the rest of the year. We've, I put some numbers together. We've kinda had a perfect storm this year for major repairs throughout the facility. We've replaced two boilers. We replaced one of the lifting pumps that filter from the inmate side of things out to the city side. And then there's been various repairs throughout the building. We've fixed the commercial washer and dryer that we have, the commercial dishwasher, showerheads and the sink and toilet apparatuses in the cells. Anytime we update those, we put a, it, it's like an electronic module device in there that controls how many times you can flush the toilet in the cell. It can only flush it three times an hour, so that prevents guys from flooding stuff and whatnot. We just kinda had a perfect storm this year and I think we've spent over seventy percent of the maintenance budget already, so.
I think you're gonna get that with a twenty-year-old building, right?
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna have that, yeah.
I was gonna say twenty-year-old kids.
No.
But, yep, so again, the, the request is kinda twofold there. It's to fix the elevator and then just to get us through the rest of the year.
Questions, comments for Steve? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Matt. Second by Tom, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Well, from Carrie's?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I update you on something else or should I wait till the end of the?
Well, we're at the end, so I was getting ready to ask if anybody's got anything, so yeah, go.
So yeah, so last meeting when the sheriff was here, we explained how we were, we had a vehicle that was crashed and we were having some problems resolving that on the insurance side. So what I wanted to clarify was the, the person we were having the issue with was the adjuster from Pennsylvania. Paul Williams and his staff, they do a phenomenal job at taking care of us at the sheriff's office. They always get back to us immediately, whether it's a workers' comp claim or an insurance claim on a vehicle. I, I kinda, we went back and listened to the meeting and it kinda came out wrong, so I wanted to just clarify. It was, it was not Paul Williams, it was the adjuster from Pennsylvania. But Paul did get involved on that claim and so I figured we're gonna have a check for that vehicle here probably within the next few weeks. Once he got involved, things moved a little quicker.
Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have information in your packet also. Is there anything else from the general Anything, are anybody up here?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mike Sprinkle, second.
Second.
No, gotta tie, go ahead, Matt.
All in favor, aye? Aye.
Opposed, same sign? So we actually close this meeting before we start another one. Okay. Hey, Tony? Tony, we catch a quick break before we start the next one?
Yes.
Okay. And then.